Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Flag's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you to the zoning board meeting this evening. I'm Karen Unger, the chairperson. To your far right, we have Mr.
Thank you.
I drew a total blank, I'm sorry.
We'll never get done tonight.
No.
She's already losing.
Yeah, already. Mr. Joe DiVannuto. And next to him is Mr. Gary Kestenbaum, and we have Mr. Kevin Abrams, Mr. Andrew Jacomaza. Our attorney this evening is Mr. Michael Donnelly, and we have Ms. Kelly Naughton will be the counsel for the shops at Woodbury. And also, we have Jessica McLennan, our recording secretary. Our next meeting will be on March 14th, which is the second Wednesday of March. The first item on the agenda is an executive session. We will not be having an executive session, but we will be having an attorney-client meeting, so you'll need to sit tight while we go into the back room and have our little discussion, and we will be back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's open. It's not completed. The hotel, they got six more floors.
Oh, they have?
Yeah. Great. Steelers didn't know what they were doing. They couldn't win when they should have been. Oh, hilarious. They didn't know what they were doing. Well, no, card games is kind of hard. But the odds are in the house, it's very true. But when you lose, they're supposed to take your money. That's what they were saying. Given how big it is, not close. No, they had no idea what they were doing. Because they said their stuff is just as fair. Well, the problem is, because they changed the deal when they came back, they were educated. All of a sudden, they're not paying you. But it was funny.
See, that's what I'm saying.
No, that they do it on purpose.
They can determine.
Yeah, on the slots, yeah.
Yes. That, yes.
Okay. Where'd you go by yourself?
Uh, no, front lawn. We usually go every Super Bowl. Over in Chester.
Is he a golfer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Golfer in Canada.
Is he a golfer?
He works for an elevator company. He's like insane.
He's not working.
He's not? You're kidding. What happened?
Just butt in it with somebody there.
Wow. It's too dangerous for the whole thing.
No, something about the guy doesn't care if that's good or bad.
So is he looking for a job?
Well, talking to me. Not looking yet. I have to leave. I gotta leave there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's not happening.
He's never happy to show up.
No, because of the first one. Whatever you want. So far, so good. When you do that, we're still going on.
Mr. Donnelly, how are you?
Very good. How are you, Brian?
I'm wonderful. Jeff, I'm gonna pick a strike over there. So you told me you was gonna fall down.
I can't think of a better way to put it. And she's at the game? Well, yeah. Oh, that person's tricking on you.
We're at a plan.
It's practice. Five, please, five.
He does that. You're out of luck if you're happy.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like a gala.
But it's not like it's a state play. I mean, they made it. Right. They just happen to play well. There's no like.
That's even better.
Yeah. Um, so, we actually are some of the important. I'm, personally, I wasn't sure. But Kerry wanted to show.
Yeah, group.
But, so I said, just. So September is our.
Whatever you say. There, you're not taking them. I'll keep an eye on them.
I don't know, we haven't figured that out. Maybe. You better. Uh.
I love it.
You better. Where's the.
Started our solution, we wanted to see. My father had friends, had a house. Now, I was there when I was sixteen. And then we just drove down through the town. Um, other than that, it was all. Stop, it's a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah. Ugly.
Never watch. So you don't like the.
Yeah, totally. No, I like it, but it's not working. It's not like. We went twice. We went the day it opened in the morning, and nobody was there. So you could get into the front, get your beer, get your prints, and get your cell phone. Then we took a couple of churches, and we did our little drive around. And you were leaving at the end. So we got there in the middle. You couldn't, you literally, a hotel is like one of the walls of the fairground. You walk into the crowd, and they just push you around in circles.
People wanna tell.
And that's not our thing, so.
No, that's ugly.
Yeah.
I literally, you know, jumping through a river of people.
I was nervous that wasn't there.
And these cursing, they're touching victims.
And they don't have like a dance, that's here, they have all the dancing.
Right.
It's all just turning weirdly, and it's saving life.
It's lonely up there, isn't it?
Tents are incredible.
I'm Mr. Donnelly.
Like two, three, four.
Oh, lonely up there.
It's just something simple.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, maybe you can pass it. You know, you can carry it.
Yeah, the girls have their scotch, you know.
Oh, they carry it.
Yeah.
It's very lonely in general.
Mm-hmm.
Here's a couple, you know, I mean, we started.
Whole city.
And, uh, it's because.
That's it.
Yeah. It's just, you, these tiny towns. It's always telling you what to be. And apples and sills, and it's so, it's so crazy.
And you know, I've traveled.
I can be real loud. So people are sure of me.
Like, they're teaching. Fracturing, disappointing.
I don't know what to do, I'm like, oops.
I know people that don't.
This is from my ex.
I don't know if it gets. No, very expensive.
But she, she, she came.
Right, right, yeah.
But they flew her over there so she could see the factory where it was built.
Yeah.
Gave her a tour.
Right.
They paid for it.
Oh, really?
They do what they were.
I don't know how she, she liked it. She's so confused. Sitting, where it's and stuff.
Well, it was in its infancy.
She's.
I don't know more than she thought.
She started with a company. I don't know, someplace down south. Just like, you know, one of these things. She's, she's, she's like seven. Because Michelle. She's, she's done so.
Great story. You have to announce.
No, no, she's for the Chinese.
Oh, you'll reach.
Yeah, she's for the Chinese. Her mother's Chinese. Yeah.
Yeah. They widen the stairs because you're walking out the palace. Michael, they said some very horrible words about you, but I was happy to thank you. Have one, have one modification.
What did your wife say?
About me going to this?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be on the market soon, buddy.
Are you?
I'm gonna have to find a new woman.
There you go. That might work.
There you go.
By the time, by the time she gets done with you.
I know.
All right, I thank everybody for their patience. We're ready to move on with the agenda. Number two, approval and acceptance of previous minutes. I understand we have a slight change to the minutes.
One, one proposal, it's an inaccuracy in the second to last.
Turn on your microphone, please.
Second to last item where it says G. Kestenbaum stated, it says, G. Kestenbaum stated they wanted to resend the previous motion. That should be revised to say that I asked that the motion on the table, which was going to, which is a motion that we didn't want to vote on, be rescinded and revised, and that's what happened.
So what are you asking it to be changed to?
Rescinded and revised. Recind, meaning R-E-S-C-I-N-D, not rescind.
Oh, mine is, oh, I have the rescind. Mine says rescind.
Mine says rescind.
Oh. I think it was changed, and you just didn't have the latest copy.
Yeah, this is the new copy.
Yeah, she's rewritten it how many times?
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
How do you vote, Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone, aye. All right, minutes are accepted. Wow. New business, there is none. All right, we now have an action on decision, Kubeczek and Moskowitz. Review a decision for a use variance to permit the use of a single-family dwelling located in the senior housing section of the Woodbury Junction subdivision be occupied by family members under the age of fifty-five. Pursuant to Section 310-36(c)(2a) 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Village Code, no persons may occupy a senior housing unit under the age of fifty-five unless permitted pursuant to the above-listed sections of the code. Said property is located in the S.H. zoning district at 27 Southfield Falls in Central Valley, which has the mailing address 27 Southfields Falls, Monroe, New York, 10950, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 255, Block 5, Lot 21. Okay, after eleven pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law Section 7-712B, number two, the board hereby denies the requested use variance. We'll take a vote. Joe?
I vote to, I vote aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the variance has been denied. Okay, public hearings this evening. The first one on the agenda is Crosby. Public hearing for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high solid vinyl stockade fence in a side yard, whereas pursuant to Village Code Section 146-5B, a maximum of four feet high is permitted. Said property is located in the H.B. zoning district at 531 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 219, Block 5, Lot 9. So the applicant's requesting a side yard fence for privacy for his residents and for pets. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir. Would you go to the podium? Thank you, and make sure your microphone is on. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Ryan Crosby.
Thank you. Could you tell us in a little bit more detail why you need this side yard fence?
We, we put a deck on the building, and we moved in as a residence, so the upstairs of the building is our residence. And on a few occasions now, there have been people wandering up the deck. Monday night was the most recent one. With the pets, and, you know, somebody wandering up my deck, I can't have that.
Well, you're right, you're on a main road there.
Yes.
Yes, it's.
I'm only looking to block in the deck. I'm not going around the building, I'm only going around the deck.
Right, I saw that on the, on your rendering.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Crosby?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Kestenbaum.
I've looked at the property.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't go on the property, but I looked, I looked at it from each angle, from across the street at J's, from Townsend and such. Sorry, I'm confused as to what you, the egress is from the parking lot only, that's the entrance, an exit?
Correct.
So it's, it's confusing to me as to what you consider a side yard. As I look at the building, I can't figure out, what's the side yard, what's the backyard, what's the front yard? Can you help me out?
Well, there is no backyard.
There is none.
There's only a side yard, and the stairs come right down into the side yard.
But I'm looking at the line that you've drawn.
Mm-hmm.
For the fence, and if, help me if I'm misunderstanding this, but if you're standing at J's and looking at what I consider to be the frontage of your property, the property that's fronting on 32.
Correct.
I'm gonna be looking at that fence.
You're gonna be looking at that fence, gonna be parallel with the building.
And if I were to stand around the back, on the neighbor's side, I'd be looking at the fence.
Correct.
And if I were standing in your parking lot.
You'd be looking at the fence.
Towards J's, I'd be looking at the fence. So again, it, the question, front yard, side yard, backyard, I'm confused about what we're, how we're.
Well, the front yard, I, I ask Gary, I ask the building inspector, which is the front yard, because the front of the building is a business, the back of the building is residential. It's on a corner property. And his reply is, he considers Route 32 as a front yard, even though it is on a corner lot with basically two front yards. So the fence would be in what is considered a side yard. Those are his words.
I totally did not understand what you just said. He considers the side facing Route 32 a front yard?
Right.
So this, that's what I'm saying, this, this fence that I'm looking at from J's is gonna be in his front yard. It's fronting Route 32.
No.
That's what I don't understand.
It's not in front of the house. It's, it's in front of the building.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Because it doesn't move across the front of the building.
I believe that considers, I believe that makes it the side yard.
Technical rear.
Right, I believe that makes it the side yard.
Now, I understand, thank you.
There are two front yards and a side yard.
Right, right.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question. You have, in the photo that you showed, you have the fence with the, it's solid, and then the first, the top.
Actually, I brought new photos for everybody.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because the picture that you showed has two colors, and you cannot have a multicolored fence.
That's fine.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, multicolored fences are not allowed.
Mr. Crosby, if it's just keeping people off your deck, why can't you do that with a four-foot fence?
My two dogs can jump over that four-foot fence.
All right.
And somebody can just as easily jump over that four-foot fence and get on the deck the same way as they cut through the trees now.
You could get over a six-foot.
You know, of course, that, the ones we've done in the past, it can't be totally all the way down to the ground.
Correct.
So that water can flow out of there. You know, like, the store, the stuff we just had where we had all the ice and stuff, you have like an ice skating rink back there.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
I would just like to see the picture of the new deck.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a semi-private fence, not a solid.
And I brought some for everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions from the board based on this little handout? Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
Thank you.
No, I'm good.
Is there anyone in the first row who would like to speak to this application? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing for Mr. Crosby is closed. And, Mr. Crosby, we have deliberations at the end of the meeting. You are welcome to stay, or you can just call the building department tomorrow to find out what the decision was.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, next public hearing is Patterson-Hunter. Public hearing for a special permit to permit the continued use of a second dwelling unit for an individual family member's, mother, daughter, pursuant to Section 310-35 of the Village Code. Said property is located in the R3A zoning district at 1155 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 201, Block 1, Lot 26, mother, daughter. This is a newly purchased home on Route 32, has a pre-existing special permit for mother, daughter. Is the applicant present? Would you go to the podium, state your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Sean Patterson.
Did you, did you close on this house? You gave us some documentation for, you know, banking and mortgage and whatever.
We scheduled to close on Tuesday.
On Tuesday. Is it contingent on getting the mother, daughter permit, special permit? Or are you going to close regardless?
We're going to close regardless.
Okay.
Is it already a mother, daughter?
Yes, it is. All we, all we expecting is the...
Continuation.
Yeah, continuation. Because it doesn't transfer over into...
Right, right, right. And you gave a list of people, family members who are planning to live there?
Yes.
You're not changing any walls, building, doors, windows?
No, we're not.
Anything, nothing?
No, we're not.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
No? All right, thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public or comments? First row? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? I forgot how many rows. Fifth row?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
All right, public hearing is closed and you also are welcome to remain till the end of the evening when we have our deliberations or you can call the Building Department in the morning to find out the results. Third item on the public hearing agenda is Osweiler. Public hearing for a use variance and modification of an existing special permit pursuant to Section 310-43.2b, Number 3, whereas said commercial warehouse and distribution uses are not a permitted use in the R.25A zoning district. No exterior modifications to the building or site are proposed. Said property is located in the R.25A zoning district at 19 Adams Street in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 220, Block 2, Lot 15.1. I received today two letters from Millicent Lebohr and Bernice Feist, which I'd just like to enter into the record. One is in favor of and one is against. All right, this is a use variance request and a change in the current special permit. Mr. Osweiler, in his application, says he has retired from the company that he owned. He has no employees working there. He's moved to North Carolina, would like to sell the property. The proposed buyer would be running a different type of business. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir. Would you please go to the podium and state your name?
Ed Romine.
I'm sorry, I...
Ed Romine.
Okay. And how are you related, you're the property owner, correct?
I'm the owner, yes.
Okay, gotcha. You, this is an application for a use variance. Were you told that you had to provide documentation, financial documentation? There are four prongs for the use variance. You filled out an application.
Right, I filled it, filled it out.
And you need to meet all four prongs and you need to show evidence of each one? Did anybody tell you that you needed to do that?
Isn't it filled out in that form?
It's filled out, but the first one where you say that you cannot realize a reasonable return, you have to show financial evidence for each permitted use within the zoning district.
Okay.
And you haven't done that. What does the board want to do with this? Do we want to?
Hold open?
Hold open the public hearing and, and just allow you another month to, to provide that documentation because we have nothing. We have zero.
Okay.
It's, it's more than just filling out the application. There has to be backup with that application, just proving or showing, I have a financial hardship, I need this use variance, so on and so forth. So that's what we're looking for.
By way of background, this property first received a use variance in 1988. And if you look at the record that was established then, and that was for the purpose of a retail store. There was price data on what someone was willing to buy it with one use but not another use. That use then shifted in 1991 to a, I forget the description.
That's when we bought.
Right. Storing trucks in a road scale business. And there was some financial information presented then as to how long the property had been in the market. It requires dollars and cents proof of financial hardship. You need to show that for every use that's allowed in the zoning district, you cannot achieve a reasonable return. And for the use that is now proposed, you can. And that requires hard dollars and cents proof.
All right.
But I think, Ed, in, you'll be able to obtain, now I know there's been a lot of activity on that property.
Mm-hmm.
And it just seems like every applicant that gets into the Building Department is, is just, it can't be done.
Right.
And I think you should be able to obtain that, a lot of that from Morris.
Yeah, he, he actually sent a letter. He was going to be here tonight, but he couldn't, he's out of town.
Of how many people have pursued purchasing the property but have backed away because of the difficulties.
Oh, yeah, I've got that, yeah. He, he's sent me that letter, but he don't have dollars and cents in there. So we can work that out.
The more detail and the more documentation, obviously, the, the better it is that the Board can evaluate.
Sure.
Mike, do you have a copy of the history of the special permits, the, the uses?
Yeah, in 1991, there was additional work done, the building was enlarged.
Right, we remodeled the whole place, yes.
So in addition to the, in addition to the use variance, you needed site plan approval and special, special permit approval from the planning board, which you obtained.
Right, yes.
So this, the site plan is unchanged, but the special permit would need to be transferred to the new owner.
Do you have copies of the special permits?
Yes.
Permit or permits that have been issued in the past so the Board can evaluate?
Yes. I have the two, I assumed you all did, but I have the two variance decisions and the special permit decision.
And what about the original?
The original variance decision in 88?
No, no. Back in the 40s or 50s or 60s.
Oh, I don't have anything back that far.
When they built that place.
Not that old. I'll send you what I have, though. I do have the two variances and the special permit. I'll send them to you. I assumed that you had them.
Just, just... Mike, for, for the sake of having an idea, or everybody, the sake of having an idea of what uses have been there previously since a commercial building was built there.
I can only tell you what's in the decisions. The 88 variance approved it, granted a use variance for a retail store and the sale of automotive parts. The 1991 use variance allowed the premises to be used as an office building for storing trucks used in a road scale testing business. Now, I will say, the applicant could ride piggyback on, on a lot of what is in that record because the building is ill-suited. It was established to most of the uses that were allowed in. It was a different designation before, so you got to look at that. It had a different classification than it does now.
Right.
But I think somebody has to put together why it is impossible to use it for anything other than this proposed use and why not allowing it to have the use variance would be an economic hardship with dollars and cents proof. That's what you need to put forward.
Okay.
But I also think we should find out what's going to be stored there. And, you know, the thing that really bothers me and, is, is the kids. I mean, I got to be honest with you, Ed. I mean, I'd hate to see a Little League game going on and having tractor-trailers coming up and down.
There's no tractor-trailer that's going to be involved.
So maybe you could get whoever the buyer is and give us like a...
I think they're here.
Of what's going to be done there.
Maybe the, the narrative could be a little bit more specific. It's also sure.
Yeah, I think if they did a narrative that, you know, there are hours of operation, what's going to be stored there, it's not going to affect the kids.
Well, I, I did give a letter from them.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a, yeah. It's a very vague description, yeah.
It's a blur than a business plan for that.
Is, is your business still in operation there?
No.
How long has it, have you stopped?
Well, actually, it's been about a year. I moved to North Carolina last December, a year ago December.
Because I know if the current use is not, if it's been discontinued for more than a year, the special permit cannot be renewed or cannot be modified?
Well, no, the use variance, yeah, the use variance does not have that lapsing provision. The special permit may need to be renewed, but the, the use variance travels with the land, but only for the use that was granted. It's not a non-conforming use any longer. Non-conforming use is a use that existed legally before the code came into being that then made that use no longer permitted. A non-conforming use that lapses for the requisite period is gone forever. However, this may have started as a non-conforming use, and I think, Kevin, that's what you were getting at, but it then changed to a use protected by use variance.
Right.
Now it's no longer a non-conforming use. It can't be both, it's only one or the other.
Gotcha.
And the use variance is good forever for the use that was allowed.
Right.
And that's why you needed to come back in 1991 for the change because the first use was retail.
That's correct.
Then you came back for office for the truck business. Now there's yet another use that wants to be proposed and that needs a modification or a new use variance. But there's no lapsing.
So basically, we're not changing the use variance, we're creating a new one if the use, I mean, a special permit. If the use variance is approved, it's a new, it's a new special permit. It's not a modification of the existing one.
I think that the special permit, I forget, that has to go back to the planning board, so they would determine that.
Okay.
If there's a planning board special permit, we would make it a condition that it be renewed, modified, reissued, however they want to call it.
Okay.
That special permit may not be, currently not valid? It may not be valid?
I didn't look, they always have a one-year duration under your code, at least under the old code.
That, that was my question, yeah.
But, you know, the Osweiler scales is still operating out of the building. Yeah. Until at such time as it's... I think the planning board, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, began to automatically renew those special permits. They'd have them on the calendar once a year and, so I, I don't know if it expired, if, usually they'd get a report from Gary and the only ones they would not renew.
He, I did ask him about that. He said that it was still there, basically that his feeling was it was still in...
That's probably why. And that would be his call or the planning board to reissue, but I, I think that's the, not as pressing an issue as getting your use variance modified, updated, reissued, whatever you want to call it. And you just need to supplement the proof that it was before the Board years ago.
Okay.
Do you understand what you need to provide to the Board in order for the use variance to be considered?
Yes.
If, if you have any questions, you can always call the Building Department and they will help you out on that.
Yeah, I will, I will double-check with Gary before I submit it.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this application in row one, sir? When the public stands up to speak, would you please address the Board and, and no talking among the audience members so that we can all hear what's going on? Thank you. State your name, please, for the secretary.
My name is Scott Dasher. And I live at 26 Park Avenue. I'm going to read because I wanted to give my thoughts concisely and clearly, so I apologize if I'm...
No problem.
...reading. I, I live three houses up from the Osweiler Brothers building and I've lived there for nearly 13 years and my backyard overlooks the property in discussion. I am opposing granting this variance and I'm pleading with the zoning board to take the same position. Granting this variance will negatively alter the essential character of the neighborhood and most importantly, as the Board has acknowledged, have a negative impact on the safety of the children in the neighborhood. There does not have, there's no proof of any inordinate economic burden on the applicant to sufficiently justify the variance and the change in use is not desired by the neighborhood. Regarding the safety of the neighborhood, Brickley Park directly across the street is a location of dozens of athletic activities all day, during the week, and on weekends where young children are going back and forth from the park to the softball field, watching their siblings and friends play. In fact, my, just remember this, my seven-year-old had his birthday party at the park with his school friends. Cars are consistently parked on both sides of the street and ironically, right, wrong, or indifferent, cars are almost always parked in Osweiler's lot due to the lack of parking. Having trucks entering the picture would further exacerbate the situation and put the children in unnecessary harms way, not to mention drowning out the sounds of the children playing. All three of my children learned to ride their bikes on Adams Street and I never, excuse me, and I never worried about anything more than an occasional passing car. The approval of this variance would negatively impact the character of the neighborhood and recreational aspect of the area. There's no way I can imagine the zoning board of the time envisioning a distribution center across from the park when they were approving the park years ago. I've been on Park Avenue for nearly 13 years and two years ago I put an addition on so that I could stay in the neighborhood. And last night I actually told my wife that if, if this goes through and it starts to get bad, that moving out of the neighborhood is something that I would seriously consider. While that's my decision to make and not your problem, what I would ask you to consider is how you would feel and how you would vote if the distribution center was being proposed next door or three houses' door, three houses down from your house in your neighborhood. Zoning laws are in place for a reason, particularly in residential neighborhoods. And yes, there are legitimate scenarios for a variance, but this is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for this gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you, have you, in the 13 years you've been there, have you seen business, have you seen comings and goings from the building in the course of their business?
Osweiler?
Have you seen, have you seen people, vehicles, anything that you...
No, it's, it's, it's honestly, it's a very sedate kind of environment. I mean, every once in a while I'll see somebody pull in or leave. And, you know, my, my, one of my friends, a neighbor, actually a businessman in Monroe, actually looked at the building to, to purchase for an athletic training facility, like a personal training facility. And everyone said the same thing, it's overpriced.
But your, your observation of the comings and goings is that it's been negligible?
Negligible, yes.
Thank you.
Um, my neighbor is...
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to approach the podium?
Flip a coin. James Pertil, 22 Park Avenue. His extension blocks the view of the park for us. Just answer that question. I've never seen a truck go in or out of there and we've been there since 1995. So it's like very quiet. I'm sure other neighbors will talk to the activities they see because they're right next door. But the distribution center, pallets outside, packing, trucks, I hope you vote against
Anyone else in the first row? Second row? Third row? That's the fourth. Yeah, that's right, fourth. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, sir.
Hi, my name is Laura Stevens. I live at 15 Adams Street, right next to Osweiler Brothers Machinery. And I have lived there for 30 years. I have, when he originally put in to make the changes from valet and paving to what it is now, we came down to the hearing and we listened and we understood the changes that he was making. It was something we could live with, so we didn't object to any of those changes. However, now to put in a distribution center when we've already seen how busy this, the park can get, it would be a detriment to the children who are living in the neighborhood. During Little League season, when my son was small, he rode his bicycle out of, out of the driveway, he was just learning, and a car stopped shortly right in front of him. It traumatized him for four years. He was cutting around back behind the other neighbor's house to get across to the park to the swings rather than risk cutting across the street. Now, the, the driver of that car didn't really see him because of the parking on both sides of the street. So she did not have any room to move, to maneuver and him coming out frightened her. She in turn took it out on him, screaming and yelling and cursing at him for frightening herself. Now, this, this is an isolated occurrence, but having big trucks, vans, you can barely get an SV, an SVU down that street during Little League season. In that field, you can sit on my front stoop, and I'll serve refreshments, and you will see that the park is active every single afternoon in the spring and in the fall during Little League and softball seasons. The park across the street during the day, you will see lots of parents coming in with strollers and their toddlers, making their way to the park to use the playground. Now, we don't want to be, we want our kids to get outside and play, but if we're gonna be concerned about them having to dodge traffic and dodge distribution vehicles, that's gonna be a major safety issue for our environment. Secondly, as far as a health issue, if there are pallets of material that is not being stored in the unit itself, but do, do tend to be outside, across the street in the wetlands behind the park, we have wildlife. We have, we have, I've seen fox, we have beavers, we have hawks. These products being outside the building are a potential hazard for attracting wildlife to the, to the homes in the area. Thirdly, when we have had a flood, the water comes up out of the stream running down Park Avenue and runs right across that property. I have pictures from Hurricane Irene when the park was so flooded because of the wetlands behind it. It came up to the bottom of my mailbox, and I saw logs floating over the fence and into the park. Now, if there are products being stored there, and they're going to get water damaged, what is going to be the plan for cleaning that, restoring it, and keeping it rodent-free? So for these three safety, health, and environmental issues, I wish the board to not even consider changing the usage on the variance here. What it's been used for before, I've been very patient with the Osweiler machinery. He does start his trucks up at 5:00 in the morning. They'll run for an hour in the winter in particular to get warm, because they're diesel. The headlights are shining on my deck. I have never filed a complaint, I have never spoken to him about it, because I'm, I consider myself a fair neighbor, and these were things that I could live with. A distribution center, a warehouse, I can show you pictures of distribution centers and warehouses that I have taken in Monroe, where there's pallets of material outside the building, and there are numerous cars parked in front of the door, minivans, SUVs, things of this nature. This is a residential area. It is meant to be a children's park. Bringing commercial, a commercial business into that, that lot of land is totally inappropriate. There is more than adequate opportunities to use the storage compartments down on Route 32. That's what the Woodbury Commons uses. When they get big shipments in, they put them in the storage unit down on Route 32, that's closer down by the dugout. Then they send vans, small vans, to pick up the material out of those storage units to bring to their stores. That's where a business like this belongs, not surrounded by private homes with children. And we've had a changeover in our community. There are a lot of families with lots of young kids, and I would hate for them to leave and change the character of our community. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Please, and thank you for asking. Back when Van Etten owned that property, was the residential character of the neighborhood the same as it is now?
No.
Or has it changed?
Because these houses were brand-new. This, Van Etten, they're, as a paving company, had already started to cut back on their operations in that particular garage. Now, when I've originally moved in, I had put up, well, no, the builder, the builder was Schmitzke, who is married to a Van Etten. So Schmitzke from Cornwall built the three houses that are on Adams Street, and they put white pines to block it so it wasn't so unsightly. But it was a mess. I was so happy when Osweiler came in and did, they cleaned it up, and we were infested with flies and mice for months afterwards when he cleaned up that garage, because it was a mess. And we were very pleased with the changes that he made to it, and we were very willing and accepting of the type of business he was gonna run out of there, because there wasn't a lot of traffic coming and going. You know, the truck goes out in the morning, sometimes it's gone for a couple of days, comes back at night. He's had vandalism there, and he's put in special lighting, again, that shines right into my kitchen. I've never had a, I've never made a complaint, because he was a reasonable businessman.
Can you describe, back when it was Van Etten, can you describe what, what, we've heard that there hasn't been a lot of activity? Heard from one gentleman, that there hasn't been a lot of activity from the property since it was Osweiler. Can you describe the activity in the neigh, the commercial activity in the neighborhood when it was owned and run by Van Etten?
Okay. One of the things that Van Etten was doing was illegal to begin with. Underneath those houses is all macadam that they had left over from previous jobs, that they were allowed, excuse me, that they were allowed to just lay layer on top of layer on top of layer on, on an old farm that was behind the Jones Hotel, correct? So while Van Etten was there, they were already seeing the, the writing on the wall, that they could not continue these environmental habits, and they were starting to pull out. So they, they, and I was working full-time outside of the community. I have a business now in the community, I've been here 30 years.
Really asking you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but were there, were there trucks and vehicles coming and going?
No.
On the, from that property?
Not, I mean, there were truck, when he brings out trucks, yes. Let me correct myself.
I'm asking you, when it, when Van Etten owned it, when Van Etten owned it, were there vehicles, whether they be paving vehicles, trucks, whatever, coming and going through the neighborhood to get to that property?
I never saw them.
Thank you.
Anyone in the fourth row, sir?
Good evening, Moses Cohen. I'm the potential buyer of this property, and I realize that a lot of information, the, they described here was inappropriate. First thing is, my business is not a distribution center. People would consider a distribution center like Walmart or a big distribution, distribution center. Let me explain you what my business is, and, and this way you're gonna have a little idea what's, what's, what's gonna be there. I was working almost 25 years in an auto parts warehouse with, with family members, and wholesale. I would say auto parts is, is a, a lot, varies in a lot of different objects, but mostly in front end, which is none, no chemicals, no hazardous, little stuff. Front end means ball joints, tire dents, filters, some filters, spark plugs, caps and rotors. That's basically, which is none of them is hazardous material. I opened my own, I still work at that place, but I opened my own place, which is still operating from the same place and selling on online. The same, the same things, we went, when we started off, like five, six years ago. I don't, I don't, I don't sell anything retail, and not wholesale. The only thing is, most of our businesses, we get, get merchandise in, we send it into Amazon, and they sell it for us. We don't have, no cars coming in and no cars going out to pick up stuff. I work there with two of my sons, which is a total of three vehicles parked there a day. I get in deliveries, once a day mostly from auto parts dealership, most of it, most of the time, with one little van comes in to, to the app of merchandise. Last five to six years, I started with auto parts, but also went into other stuff. Sometimes it's like household little things, sometimes it's industrial, whatever I can get a good buy on, I buy it. And especially it is before the season of the holiday season, I get in a couple different things, different items, which none of them is hazardous, and none of them, none of them is described as, mentioned before here, it's gonna be hazardous. Now, when we get in merchandise in this place, the only thing is what we, we store, we, we, we pack it, we make packs of it, and we put it in boxes, we put it in a pallet, and I call in a, a trucker, picks up maybe one or twi, two pallets per week. That's it, what's, what's going in and out in this place. Now, a lot of, a lot of times, we, like, like I said, my son is going, he goes to a distribution center or a dealership or another place where he buys stuff with his minivan. He picks up the, the stuff, he backs into the place, and he brings it in. There's no tractor trailers coming in and out, it's like, not like a huge distribution center. No pallets are stored outside. We can, the, the place is good enough to store all my pallets when I get a delivery, to store it, everything inside, nothing is gonna be laid outside. No pallets, no, 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 no nothing. Everything is gonna be actually worked from, worked from the inside. There's no high lows and low trucks, no, no, no big operation like it was, maybe in the, in the application, was it still said like that, but this is the actual use of our, of our business.
Anyone from the board have questions?
I have a couple. In your letter, Mr. Cohen, it says reselling household items and some car parts. Are there any used car parts being sold, or is it all new?
No, everything fresh, factory fresh, new.
Okay, it also states that you use primarily vans and smaller trucks to do your shipments one way or the other. It says usually not trailers. Your words, do you sometimes have trailers?
I, ship out never, maybe sometimes when I get in a delivery, if they ship it by a trailer, I would say maybe once a year, maybe. I don't have trailers coming in. And even when we get in, is, the most what I get in at a time is one pallet. So it's not like a tractor, a full load of, of merchandise coming in. It's, like I said, it's three people handling it, we can't even, even handle that trailer. I don't even have a pallet jack now, my business. Everything is being done by hand. So you can imagine three people working most part-time, how many trailers a week I can, I can handle.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I do. So initially, what you basically talked about was mostly car parts, but in your application, or not your application here, but in this letter here, you really discuss reselling house, household items and some car parts. So is it more car parts, or is it more household items? What are we talking about with household items?
Okay, we started off, like I said, mostly with car parts, but then we, we changed a little bit, and like, even a lot of car parts, what we started off, it's not, we can't sell it anymore as cars changes, and like, you're not gonna, you're not gonna sell today a distributor cap and rotor, and a lot of, a lot of, not gonna find it in only a 1971 car, and you, and not, and not any, it's not gonna be used anymore. So everything changes, and, and we have to have business, so we, yeah, we change, we, like I'd say, our household items, we sell sometimes, we get a good deal on blenders, food processors, sometimes lint rollers. It's all different, it's not a consistently same market every day. Whatever we can get a good deal on, we buy.
But that's what I have a problem with, because you really don't, is, what's the business plan? What, what are you actually selling out of this location? Because if you're, you would, you really just spend a lot of time discussing car parts, and you just did that again, and then on this letter here, you're talking about household items, but now you just said that, well, if I get a sale on lint rollers, you'll sell that out of there. So it's, you're kind of all over the map with this thing.
Oh, we sell.
And I'm just trying to figure out, because it's, it's, Kevin's right, because my kids go to that park. So I'm kind of thinking of the commercial traffic there, and really, when, during baseball season, softball season, the basketball, there are cars lined up on that block. So I'm trying to get a, an idea of what your business is there, because it really is kind of, it just says Product Supply LLC.
That's right.
So it could be anything.
That's right.
You know what I mean?
That's right.
It's kind of very general.
Okay, so.
So, and that's what I'm trying, and even then, you're, you, you just said you, you're only maybe getting two a week, but you're talking, you, in this letter, you got multiple shipments per week. It's not that, you know, two, I don't really, yeah, it's more than one, but multiple shipments means you're getting a lot of shipments per week in this location.
Like I say, the dealership is gonna stop in mostly every day to deliver, but they come, the dealership is like, like, you're gonna call, call them up, he delivers every day a couple boxes, with, with a, with a, a small van is gonna be deliver. Now, when we, when we buy the, like you say, when we find a bargain, we can buy a pallet at a time. Like last week, we bought, we bought locks, master lock. All kind of different locks, yeah, we bought a, a one pallet at a time, and we, we store it, we, we not shipping out all at once, but we're not shipping out every day, what we, we, we store, we pack it, we put it together, and it's hard to say every day which item it is, because every day it changes the items.
Where's the current location you have now? Where is that location?
It's, where, it's actually not, I, like I said, I work at a, at a automotive business, and I do a little bit part-time there, which is a 25 Millpont Parkway, Monroe, New York, 10950. It's actually, I'm not, no, I don't know if you're familiar, the old Carquest store in Monroe, I don't, Millpont Parkway, it's, it's, it's a door 30 inches wide, not even a loading dock there. So it's no in and out, a trail, a trailers coming in there and out.
I think, I think I'm good for now.
To follow up with Andrew's asking, is it fair to conclude that if your business is successful, you're selling the right goods, and the buyers are buying, you're gonna have FedEx trucks, UPS vans, private vans, and box trucks, bringing merchandise in that could be cases all the way to pallets? That's what I heard you say. They could be coming in in cases, or in some cases, they could be coming in in pallets. So they, if they didn't come in, if pallets don't come in in tractor-trailers, then they come in in box trucks. You can't put a pallet inside a UPS truck. So is, is that fair, that merchandise would be coming in daily in those vehicles, and then going out the same way, depending upon how successful the business is?
No, not intended to do so, because when I do sell a, a big shipment, when I have, do have a big, really big shipment, what I do is, I have a brother which runs a warehouse, actually, this is, is, is business, warehousing, shipping, and everything is being shipped him, to him in the Jersey, and he packs it and he handles it. So because, but like, as I described, it's me and my two sons, we're not even able to handle it. So everything gets, which is huge, bigger than I can handle, I really, I outsource it to him.
I, I think, because you're not really, like, you have many different products that you could basically buy. It's not even like you're, I'm gonna buy this and only this. You're, you're, it's open to anything, which means that shipping-wise, it really could be delivered, anything, anyway, it, you may get van deliveries, you may get truck deliveries, you may get trailer deliveries, because there's not a general thing, there's not a specific thing that you're actually buying for this location and storing there. You're, pretty much, it's, everything is fair game, which means that every way to ship something is just fair game into that property. That's, you know, piggyback kind of what Gary's.
Ship in or ship out?
Either way, either way you're looking at it, because you're, it could be large items, it could be small items, you're not, like I said, there's really not a specific thing you're saying to me that we're gonna deal with. It sounded like more carp, like I said, going back to what I said, it sounded like more car parts is what you're talking about. On this letter that we received, it was more household items that you said you were selling. That's my concern. Like I said, there's not really a business plan here, and I have no idea what's being, would, would be actually going into this location. So, anyway, I'm, I'm good.
And I'm, I'm a little vague on this too, because once you get the permit, then you could, you could fill the building with. you could fill the building with whatever. I mean, that's what makes me nervous. It's a big building.
It's not implied to do so.
I've heard that before.
Okay.
And there's no disrespect, there's no disrespect.
No.
It's not, it's nothing like that, but once.
Once the doors open and everything is done, Kevin's right, it could be anything going through there, it could be parakeets, it could be paint, it could be belly button lint, it could be anything that goes in there, it's, we just don't know, so. Hey, listen, in certain countries, belly button lint.
Oh, geez. It's a delicacy.
Oh, come on.
You say, oh, no, but until you've tried it.
Any other questions from the board?
Valentine's Day, people.
All right.
Yeah. Your husband took you here tonight.
Mr. Cohen, are you done? Are you finished? We have no more questions for you.
One thing, but this concern is gonna be with every business, whatever you're gonna give permits, it's gonna be the same thing. Now, the second thing is, if you're talking about trucks, box trucks coming in, I think UPS delivers to every residential delivery in all United States, and they're not intended only to go to commercial, and same thing as FedEx, small FedEx deliveries and UPS deliveries, as far as coming in merchandise. And like I said, we're not getting in tractor-trailers, and going out, we.
Are you gonna guarantee that? No tractor-trailers?
Coming in?
Are you gonna guarantee there will be no tractor-trailers?
So far, as of now, I.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves as far as a special permit, so.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is there anyone else in that row who would like to speak? Fourth row, yes, sir.
You missed your turn.
Change your seat, change your seat.
Hello, my name is Joseph Feast, I live on 42 Park Avenue, I actually live right across the street from Osweiler Brothers. And one of the biggest concerns is the ball field and any kind of commercial traffic that would be coming in there, because like everybody said, during softball season, trying to get a car up and down the street, and even UPS trucks and FedEx trucks, I've had them, I've had them come on my yard to try to turn around, I mean, because they can't get down the street. And the children, all the children play up and down the street. I love going out and watching, watching the ball games, and with trucks and stuff going up and down the road, that's just not safe, it's not healthy, it's not safe for the community. As far as it is right now, he starts a truck in the morning about 5:00, and he leaves, and he comes home maybe 5:00, 6:00 at night, with this big truck that he weighs the scales with, and he has one, maybe one pickup truck with the business too, and that's about all that's in the business. There's not much traffic there at all, all day long. So that's why my biggest concern is the health and safety of the children around the area, and, because they all play, and they ride bicycles up and down there, because you can't ride on Park Avenue, because Park Avenue is like a speed zone. And that's why all the kids stay on there, where the ball field is, and they play basketball, they play basketball 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. And everybody in the neighborhood, we don't have a problem with it, because they're nice, they take care of it, but with a lot of commercial traffic and stuff, I don't think that would just be feasible for the area, and it wouldn't be safe. That's all I have to really say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Last row, anybody? Oh, sorry, I pulled.
I know. Damn those support meetings.
Frank McCarthy, 37 Park Avenue, for the last eight years. Prepared statement. So I oppose any change to zoning laws for the building at 19 Adams Street. I believe that making it a commercial warehouse and distribution center will negatively affect my neighborhood, especially not knowing what the products are. This building is the sole business on Adams Street and Park Avenue, and has been extremely low-key in the eight years that I've lived across from it. It's an overwhelmingly residential area. I don't wish to have increased commercial traffic noise, pollution, et cetera. Reiterating what a lot of people said, the building's directly across from Brickley Field, which, you know, it's a logistical nightmare as-is, so adding any more to the mix is, I don't think it's a good idea at all. Make the situation, bad situation worse. Trucks using this road lessens the safety of the children on Adams Street, I've seen many close calls myself, I even avoid going down there in my Honda when there's baseball games and stuff, because it's, you could barely get down the street, so even one tractor-trailer is too many, as far as I'm concerned. I believe that relaxing the zoning rules could open up an environment where others will follow suit and encourage building of warehouses and distribution centers in other places in the neighborhood. I strongly oppose this application, and I hope you will consider the negative ramifications it would have on our neighborhood, and also the diminished safety of the town's children at the park in Brickley Field. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the fourth row? Last row?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Andrew Zuma, so I live on Hunter Street, so right around the block, across the street from the church. Having been in the transportation industry, very close to the warehousing industry for close to 20 years now, I've been a resident here for the past eight years, one of the important things that we have to remember is not just the effect of safety of kids, not just of the effect of the environment that we're in, but also, what other dangers are we gonna be up against with even 26-foot straight jobs coming down, much less 40-foot ocean containers? I have a tremendous amount of empathy for the seller, as well as for the buyer, but let's say he gets a great deal from China on a 40-foot ocean container that's coming down Hunter Street to make the U-turn to get into that driveway. The potential there for tearing up roads, for hitting street signs, power lines, yeah, UPS definitely delivers to my house almost every day, Amazon Prime is a great thing, but this is not a 26-foot box truck that's coming to pick up two or three pallets, this is a vehicle made to be in a residential area. I think that we always have to be careful of what we're opening when we mess with Pandora's Box, putting something like that there exposes hazards that we may not even have anticipated. And I understand that it would be a small increase in those, in those trucks and in that type of traffic, but I think if we really sit down and consider where that location is, and you look at the surrounding neighborhood, to put any kind of heavy equipment or large, larger truck, or anything like that, just, it does not make sense there. The road is not wide enough, the turns are not wide enough, more than likely because they can't make the turn onto Adams from Park, they'd come down my block and go past the water department. My neighbors have two kids, I have two kids, two blocks up from me, there's three high school age or younger kids. If you look at the overall plan, while, again, I have empathy, you know, you need to figure out the right use for that property, I just don't think the town, the community would be best served by that being there. I don't want to take up anybody else's, any more of anybody else's time, thank you very much.
Did I miss anyone in the first row? Second row?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Sandia Torres, I live on 9 Adams Street, I live two houses down from the property, right across the street from the park. So honestly, I just, it's more just, I guess, anger about this whole thing. I have twins, four-year-old boys, that we just bought this property about three years ago, because we wanted our children to go across the street, grow up across the street from a park, from a wonderful neighborhood, and it's concerning not to know what's gonna be going into that corner, when, in all honesty, you don't even know what you sell. Now, what you're saying does not make sense, you say there will be a few cars, so how would your goods be delivered, minivan only? You can't describe household items, can we get further examples? And you're still unsure of your own business, you sound like you hustle, you get what you get and you sell it. You said you got at least a pallet, so why the need for that space anyway?
Can I stop her for one second?
Sure.
She has to be speaking to us, not to them.
Right. I'm sorry, this is my first time, so I'm learning it myself. So then I'm asking you to please ask those questions then, because those are things that, at the end of the day, we're gonna be affected by it. So these are questions that I have, that I'm hoping that you can find answers for. What exactly are these household items? In reality, he seems unsure what those household items are himself, so my concern is, although he's saying that none of it is chemicals or whatnot, that doesn't guarantee in the future that it won't be. So, just, I'm sorry, I'm also concerned of what kind of cars, vans, or whatever you decide to call it, are going, to be going down that street. Again, I have two boys, they're starting the Little League this year, so they'll be playing that park every day. So I'm a little concerned as to what kind of vehicles are gonna be going in and out of that property on a daily basis. There are children that I see every day going to that park without their parents, because it's a safe neighborhood. I'm not exactly sure if that will be the case anymore, once that goes, once that property is taken in that corner. So, I mean, that's just pretty much it, I just, it's a unique property where it is, so we need to really think smart and carefully as to what goes there. I mean, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
You know, I had this written down, but I didn't bring it up, because I didn't want the wrong intentions to be communicated, and it has to do with property value. You know, just like the gentleman said, he has compassion for the seller, I do too, everybody has a right to make money, and, you know, this is the free market, but if there's gonna be a variance based on a inability, if you will, to occupy that space, that presents a quote-unquote "an economic hardship" on that person, well, what happens to the 20, 40, 50, 100 houses around that, if that goes bad? Now we have 20, 40, 50 economic hardships, because the property value goes down, because no one wants to live next to a commercial warehouse, and who knows what it becomes, like we said, with Pandora's Box, so I would just, I would just ask you to consider that, that, you know, if there's a variance given on economic hardship, what about the economic hardship that the, that all the surrounding neighbors are gonna suffer if things go south? So just please balance that, thank you.
Did I miss anyone else? Last one.
Hi, my name is Mary K. Mulhern, I live at 15 Adams Street, which is right next door to Osweiler's place. Osweilers have been wonderful, wonderful neighbors there, they've been respectful of the neighborhood, of the children, of everybody, and now they're closed, they're done, and we're gonna get in new neighbors, and there's so many children there, and so many homes and families, and nobody's said what time the business is gonna be open, what time it's gonna shut, you're talking about the cars coming in and out, I live right next door to that, and that's, if they're gonna be coming in all different hours, and it's crazy, it's crazy, and it's just, it's not really feasible, if you really look at the whole picture. And then, like our friend over there said, with the economic values, our houses are gonna go right down the drains, and I mean, you're gonna consider one economic value for the Osweilers, when indeed there are, there's like 10 houses that are just right, right around that whole, that whole thing, that are gonna, the prices are gonna go down, you know, and then, we're not, we've been there forever, and we've been getting new neighbors in now, moving in with young children, our children are older, you know, and hopefully we'd be able to have our grandkids come there, you know, and it's just, it was such a wonderful place for my children to grow up in, playing hockey out in the street, and just, everybody was very respectful of each other, neighbor helping neighbor, helping the kids, and like they said, it's a very safe place, children are over there, over in the field all the time, without parents, young ones, you know, and you bring in some kind of business like that, where you're having trucking coming in and out, and deliveries, and leaving, and going, and it's just, it's dangerous all the way around, and it's gonna affect the whole vicinity there, really, from our block all the way over to Hunter Street, and just even over on the other side, it's just, it's crazy. And nobody's even said any hours, what hours are they gonna be working? When are the deliveries coming? When are they going? You know, I'm a bus driver, I have to get to sleep, and get, I'm up at like 4:30 in the morning, you know, and I'm quiet, but you wanna talk about truck deliveries and stuff at that time? It's not quiet, you know, so, anyway, thank you.
Awful lot of two-hour delays this winter.
I'd like to make a motion that we carry this public hearing over to next month, to give the applicant time to submit his information for the.
I'll second that.
These variants, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so this will be carried over until next month. And our next application is the Shops at Woodbury, and our counsel is recusing himself, and in his place will be Ms. Kelly Naughton.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I do, and I was gonna say something, but I decided not to.
What happened to my agenda here? Good night, I lost my. I lost my agenda. All right, next on the agenda is public hearing for the Shops of Woodbury LLC, public hearing for an interpretation pursuant to Section 310-49(c)(3). The applicant requests an interpretation of 310-6F and 310-7 to determine if a hotel is permitted as part of a commercial center. Furthermore, the applicant requests an interpretation as to whether the proposed hotel meets the required frontage as defined in Section 310-2. Said property is located in the IB zoning district on Losi Lane in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 225, Block 1, Lot 34.1 and 34.2. This is the property formerly owned by Cabela's, and the applicant wishes to build a commercial center with a hotel, which the building inspector has said cannot be part, the hotel cannot be part of the commercial center, and says also that the frontage is not there. So the applicant, I see, is present, would you please state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Steve Esposito, Esposito Associates, and we represent the Shops of Woodbury LLC. Just some of the veteran members of the board are familiar with this site, it was the Cabela's site, and I'd just like to give you a little brief history regarding. It was the Cabelas site, and I'd just like to give you a little brief history regarding the site and its evolution to this point. This is Route 17, Aviary Road Drive. This is the signalized intersection. The Chuck's Gas Station is right here. The site was originally a 13.6-acre site, which was, pretty much this was the outline of the site when Cabelas purchased it. The site was also, I will call, the linchpin of the 131 original design for the renovations for the ramps. This site was part, actually was the proposed southbound ramp, which was really the critical movement in the original 131 renovations. That's no longer in the plans to be constructed. So, but at that time, there was a taking of that, a taking from this parcel, from the Cabelas parcel, of 2.4 acres, which reduced it down to 11.23 acres. And just as of recent, as of January 5th, there was a second taking, and that was for 2.13 acres. And that is this portion of the site right here. And if you can see on your plans, there's, the parking stripes on this portion of the site are in red. That is now going to be, that is now slated to be the new park and ride that's going to be constructed. It's 204 spaces as part of the 131 ramp. That now yields an acreage of 9.1 acres total, is now buildable or developable. So the two takings have really whittled down the overall site, which has a significant value, both in terms of land value and in terms of potential long-term revenues to We had asked the building inspector to opine on whether or not a hotel, in this particular, specifically in this case, a hotel, but it's really a more general question, can be part of a commercial center. If you look at the definition of a commercial center under the definitions, I'm going to read it to you. "A structure or track of land providing more than one permitted or specially permitted retail or service use designated, maintained, operated as a unit under a single ownership or control, sharing certain facilities in common, such as driveways, parking, drainage, landscaping." Our proposed plan does just that. The current plan is a mixed-use development, proposal of retail, restaurants, and a hotel, which share site improvements and will be owned and maintained by a single ownership. It is the opinion of the applicant that this, this application meets the definition and is consistent with the purpose of the IB zone. IB zone is also to provide a variety of economic development opportunities. In the building inspector's letter, you know, he does say, we take sort of, let me just go back and say, and then also, Mr. Thomasberger says that in his letter, quote, "The code does not state that commercial centers are only comprised," or say, "The code does state that commercial centers are only comprised of uses in the HB zone." As you can see clearly in the definition that I just wrote, that is not the case. There is, we have not found anywhere in the code that says that only uses in the HB zone may constitute commercial centers. Our position is, is that there's no prohibition to having permitted uses in the underlying zone, in our case, the IB zone, to be part of a commercial center. The minimum, and if you look again at another sort of definition under Section 310-7, that's the bulk requirements. The minimum, the minimum required for a commercial center is centers consisting of more than one use of permitted, or one more, excuse me, more than one permitted use or special permit use in the HB district. So you have to have one or more. So in the HB zone, you have retail, restaurants, office, there's a lot of opportunities there in terms of land uses. But that's the minimum. You know, it doesn't prohibit still allowing permitted uses in the underlying zone to be part of that commercial center. And that's our position. We've scoured the code. We don't see the word "only" in there in regards to commercial centers. So we would, you know, we think that contrary to the code enforcers, code enforcers' conclusion, a hotel or motel, which is a special permitted use in the IB zone, is not expressly prohibited as a use in the commercial center, which is also a special use permit in the IB zone. So both a commercial center and a hotel are both permitted uses in the IB zone. And that's sort of what we're asking you to weigh in on. So that's one of them. And then there's another one, another section in Gary's letter that he also refers to, we have to, if we wanted to do a hotel and a commercial center, that we would have to subdivide the parcel, have the hotel on a separate lot and a commercial center on a separate lot. We also feel that, that there's a section in the code, which is, let me find it real quick, Section 310-6F. And that is minimum lot area requirements. And basically, it says that any land use, first of all, you're permitted to have more than one principal use on a lot. And in our case, we want to have a commercial center and a hotel, but each one of those uses have to provide for the minimum lot area. We didn't pursue that one because if we look at our proposed hotel, it's just a theoretical use, that requires a fixed acreage. The commercial center requires a minimum of two acres. We have 9.1 acres. The likelihood for us to pursue a hotel that would be economically viable, we would be required to obtain from this board an area variance for a minimum lot size. So we thought that the, that's an alternative that we can pursue. It's my understanding that Mr. Thomasberger has sort of rethought the necessity for subdivision. So one of the things that we would like to do is, one, pursue the interpretation on the fact that any permitted use on the underlying zone is permitted as long as you have one or more uses from the HB zone for commercial center, and that we could, we're entitled to have a hotel or any permitted use in the IB zone along with the IB, along with the commercial center. So whether it's a, you know, office building or whatever, but we think that we're entitled to both of those without having a subdivision.
Just so the board and the public is aware, I did have conversations with Gary Thomasberger, and a subdivision is not required. Your code does permit more than one use on the lot, so long as all the bulk requirements are met.
That's it. That's it.
Steve, are you going to be submitting an amended application to address the area variance issue?
Yes. What we'd like to do is, you know, our preferred, you know, interpretation is that this board finds that the code does not preclude or prohibit permitted uses in the underlying zone in a commercial center, as long as we meet the requirements, minimum requirements of a commercial center in bulk regulations. That's our first and foremost path. The second one is, we'd like to amend the application to now include, since subdivision is now off the table, right of the requirements, is to present to you also an alternative to request an area variance for a hotel in commercial center.
So the board knows this, I'm sorry. This notice of public hearing did not include an area variance, so it will need to be adjourned this evening to amend the public hearing notice. It will be re-noticed, republished, and resent out to include that request, and the applicant will be submitting an amended application to request an area variance in the alternative.
Are there any questions?
Are we going to address the frontage? The application has an interpretation as to whether the proposed hotel meets the required frontage?
Correct. If you recall, in Gary's letter, you'll see in the first paragraph that he was not privileged of having a site plan, that to really make a full determination on the availability of frontage, we are confident that we can provide the frontage as required by the code in the, as part of the development of a commercial center. And we will sort of elaborate on that a little bit too as part, as our modified application to this board.
That would be part of your amended?
Yes.
Application?
So we're going to do the interpretation then too? Do it all at once, or are we going to?
I would, I would imagine we would. Do the interpretation tonight?
No, to consider them both to the?
Together, when we get the amended. Yeah, I think we should get the amended.
Karen, can I ask Steve a question?
Yes, go ahead, Karen.
I just want to make sure I understand, because I read all your documents, but under the change, based on the changes and the circumstances, you made it clear that you're asking for an interpretation as to whether the language, the code prohibits a hotel in the, under the circumstances that you discussed, the commercial center. What other interpretation are you asking for?
It's really, I mean, we're, if you just look at it in terms of land use, you have, our underlying zoning is the IB zone, and there's permitted and special permitted uses in the IB zone.
I'm sorry. I get that.
Right. So let me just.
You ended your, I'm sorry, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page. You ended your presentation by saying you were asking that the board render a decision, an interpretation, on whether or not a hotel is prohibited. Those were your words.
Correct.
Whether it is or is not prohibited.
Correct.
That was one.
That the code is not.
Yes.
That the code is not.
That's one aspect of the interpretation. Based on all the changes, very succinctly state what the other interpretations are that you're looking for, if any, beside that.
Correct. And that's what our amended site plan, our amended application will show, will present to you the alternative to grant, an alternative to making that interpretation to granting an area variance for lot area.
So you're only asking for one interpretation prior to the area variance?
Correct.
Aside from the area variance, you're asking for one interpretation?
Well, I'm actually asking, the preferred and first action would be the interpretation. Because if you interpret in, from, if you make the interpretation that we're suggesting or presenting, then an area variance will not be required.
Karen, where I'm going with this is?
I think what we're going to do is wait for the, we're going to wait for the amended. I think what we should do is wait for the amended application and then consider both of them together, so we have all the facts.
And I agree with you. I'm just trying to understand, based on Steve's original application, he was asking for interpretations of three separate aspects of the code.
Well, you're removing the frontage, right? Because you feel that you have?
No, well, since it's part of Gary's letter, we will address it in the amended application.
Okay.
So it'll be, just so Gary and I get on the same page, it's the initial interpretation regarding allowing, or identifying that the code does not prohibit permitted use to be included in a commercial center of the underlying zone, whether it's a hotel or whatever other land use is permitted under that underlying zone. Secondly, we're going to present to you the request for area variance because of the essentially taking of land twice from the DOT, that it's a little slim in that to make this an economically viable development, you know, that we're going to, we'll present to you a request for an area variance. That will be specific to lot area. And then the third piece of that is we'll illustrate to you our position on the frontage, which is?
And prior to your next meeting, I will confirm with Gary his interpretation as to whether or not that meets the code for frontage. If it does, that will not be an issue that's before this board.
Right.
All right, do I, do we need to make a motion? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak regarding this application? No?
Well, I'll make a motion. We continue the public hearing until?
February, March 14th.
March 14th.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this public hearing will be carried over till March 14th.
Can I suggest that when you do, you put this item on first so Biz Norton can get in and out?
I was looking.
I'll second that.
I looked around.
Hey, if I got a seat.
Yeah, why shouldn't Kelly have the seat?
That's true.
Thank you very much.
That's true.
Good night.
All right, next on the agenda is a building inspector's report, which we do not have. And we will now deliberate on the closed public hearings. So our first closed public hearing is the Crosby Public Hearing for the Fence in a Side Does anybody have any concerns regarding this application?
None here.
Do I have a motion to render a favorable decision?
I make that motion.
Wait a minute, that we will vote on, that Mike draft one and we'll vote on it next meeting?
Yes, Mike should.
Draft a positive.
Declaration.
Right. That we will vote on at the following meeting.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Second public hearing is for Patterson-Hunter. This is the existing mother-daughter. No changes are going to be made. They're closing on the house on Tuesday regardless. Anybody have any problems with this application or any comments?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to draft a favorable decision that we would vote on next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. That's the end of our public hearing. Do I make a, I'll make a motion, we adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Gary did. Oh, Joe did, sorry.
She's just hearing voices at this point, Karen. She has no idea what